Call this regular meeting of the Southwest-looking local schools Board of Education to order. It is Thursday, September seventeenth, 7:00 PM. We're in the Board of Education meeting room. We'd like to welcome our visitors both here and online. You'd like to please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
So tonight we have the Watkins volleyball team, who is currently 11-0, and will be going for their forty-fourth consecutive regular season victory tonight. Last Saturday they beat the defending state champs, The Sales, and are currently ranked fourth in the central district and twelfth in the state.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jones, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Moore?
Here.
Mrs. Spindler?
Here.
Mr. Vincent?
Here.
Mr. Zani?
Here.
Mrs. Engel?
Here. We have a quorum. We can continue. We have one request to speak for public participation. Mrs. Ms. Lyles, would you like to speak? Please introduce yourself, give your address, give any group affiliation, and you will have five minutes to speak. Mr. Jones will be keeping the time, and he will let you know when you have one minute left.
Good evening. My name is Violet Lyles, and I'm a lifelong member of this community. And I actually attended school in this very building as an elementary student. I was at Watkins Middle School and High School in the class of nineteen eighty-seven. And I'm also now a proud parent of a senior who attends Watkins High School. And I'm just great to be up here to represent the senior parents of the senior high school students. It also thrills me to see that the guy voted for is on this board. And I do want to leave you a little bit of my background because I want you to know just a little bit about who I am. I came to the task force in nineteen seventy-five, and my dad was actually assigned his FBI office here in Columbus as an FBI agent after being a Marine in Vietnam. And we make this our home, and this is my hometown. I actually work for the Department of Defense and the Defense Finance and Accounting Services, and I'm in a managerial role. And I completely understand rules and regulations. So what I want to share with you tonight is basically to let you understand that I do understand the reasons why we have certain protocol in order for us to move forward with things such as special events in a COVID-19 world. And I want to say specifically that, you know, our mission at DOD is basically to make sure that every American on this soil and abroad, that we are able to keep a strong military and ready for war. And this silent war with COVID-19 is very real, and I believe that we're winning it. I also believe that we're seeing the statistics now where what we put in place as protocols is showing that we are winning that war. And that our freedoms as Americans and the ways that we're kind of familiar with, we're kind of returning back to those. I am the organizer of the homecoming private event that is reserved at Ms. Wyler Farms on October the third, where the venue. When some came home from school on a Wednesday and said that there was no homecoming dance for the weekend, I was pretty sad because I remember those homecoming dances and I enjoyed them. So Thursday morning, I called Mr. Ms. Wyler, and I asked him if his venue was available. And he said, yes, October the third. He had two other schools that were actually interested in the event, in the venue for an event, and he said, but I have the third. Nobody's committed to. And I said, I'll take it. I went over that night, and I made a $500 deposit because I believed that I would be able to actually stay within the regulations of the COVID-19 environment at the Ms. Wyler's farm. And I really felt like it was the right thing to do for the students, to be quite honest. So Tuesday, I received an email from the Lincoln County Health Department Commissioner stating that he was made aware of my event. And he shared with me the boundaries of any private events. I actually submitted the email to our secretary so that he could actually see his email. He gave me guidance on what is acceptable and not acceptable. Yesterday, I had a five o'clock discussion with him, and we talked about if there would be any citations given to me if I, as a private citizen, held a private event. And he, again, referred me to the guidance that he gave me. I understand that there's no other jurisdiction over me as a citizen of the state except for federal laws. And I have made changes to the event that I'd like to share with you because I want to open up communication. I want you to know what I'm trying to do for the students in order to make just a little bit of normalcy in a very abnormal world. One, I changed the event to only be for seniors. There will only be three hundred people allowed, and it will be a catered event. This event is closed and always has been closed for Watkins Middle School students only. No dates from any other school will be allowed to attend. Masks will be worn, and social distancing will be protocol. And I've asked some of the top senior parents that I know to lead the chaperone committee to ensure that we are successful and that there's no horse plane going around jeopardizing the success of an event that could actually bring memories for a lifetime. I am here tonight to open up the communications, and I've been told that coaches are telling students that if they attend this private event, that there will be consequences. And I just think that that's very unfair. I am asking you to release a statement to the faculty and to all the staff saying that if a student attends this event, that no consequence would be held against them for attending a private event. If we're staying within the boundaries, and I've managed to maintain the regulations, and I place all COVID-19 protocol in place for the senior students only, I ask you to allow us to have some kind of normalcy and an opportunity to celebrate a homecoming. Would you release a statement? If you have no answer at this point, I would like for you to consider it. And I want to ask you if you have any questions for me.
I don't right now.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We need an adoption of the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That motion passes. All right, we have two A, Teamsters Local 413. All right, Southwest-looking Education Association. All right, we need approval motion of three A. Motion to approve three A.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. All right, that passes. Need a motion to approve the financial report.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Jones?
To add to the agenda, the executive summary for the month end, August thirty-first. Really, we don't have estimates yet, so we're just kind of looking at comparison last year. Our final income tax, I mean, our final property tax settlement came in for August. It was about fourteen percent higher than last year, which is a really good thing. So even during these tough times, tax, property taxes are still getting paid. However, year-to-date, we're about $300,000 lower than we were last year this time. And a lot of it has to do with the income tax and delaying it to July, from April to July. Hopefully, we'll get a lot of that back in October when that second settlement comes in. On top of that, the expenditure is about $700,000 higher than we were at this time last year. So keep in mind our revenue expenditures, but overall, it's a fairly routine amount. Okay, glad to answer any questions you have.
Uniforms and equipment repair. Mr. Jones, what is that? Is that our maintenance staff?
Yes.
Okay.
Maintenance and custodians?
Yeah, okay. That's that yearly budgeted uniform?
Yeah.
Okay.
All the negotiated agreements?
Yep, okay. Any questions, anyone? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Okay, that motion passes. Need a motion to approve items five A through I, one or all of those?
Motion five A through I.
Second. Any questions on any of those? Any discussion? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Motion passes. All right, some business items. Probably have to take some of these separate, I would think. How about six A through C?
I move item six A. Second.
All right, any questions on those? Mr. Jones?
Just a little FYI.
Yeah.
Most of the changes for the first and the second reading are all to be with Title IX.
Yeah.
Okay.
And adding that information into the policies.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. How about six B? Motion to approve six B.
Second.
Any questions? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. All right, we have six C. These are our school bus routes. We need a motion to approve the bus routes for the 2021 school year. Superintendent or her designee will have the authority to make changes as needed through the year.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
That passes. All right, how about six D? We've got a motion to approve the resolution for the OFCC Design Development submission and the LFI MOU for the Watkins High School to middle school renovations.
Motion approval, six D.
Second.
All right, Mr. Jones, you want to do some?
Yeah, I can do a quick overview. The design development, the design development, it took you a couple months ago for the schematic. And there is an LFI MOU, a funded initiative, and I have understanding in there that only includes your project agreement LFI, which you agreed to when you started the project, and your pre-bond monies or the extra money you put in. So that means that we are basically on budget at this point. At schematic, you talked a little bit about what was not included in the project. And between PR, schematic, and today, there's been very few changes. They took out some of the windows that were not in the original master plan, and they will bid those as alternates. It was really natural. They are going to bid as alternates kitchen equipment, locker room renovations, skylights. I call them the outdoor restrooms. The restroom's on the corner that you can come outside. And all ADA has been taken care of. And you have the outside, you have a bus loop, circulation sidewalk, and everything working with the new access. So are there any questions?
This is the next phase. We have DD, then we move on to possible G and P before we actually bid the documents. This is just the next step in the process for the renovation. Julie's here to answer any questions you have, and if we need to, you can reach the architect. Not everybody, except not, you just saw them going back in June, and that was, it hasn't changed much in the past couple of months. Just fine details as I move forward.
And they will be going bidding some of those items as alternates, so maybe we can buy them on the day. We don't know if you can.
Are there things not included that you're concerned about, Mr. Jones?
Well, Mr. Jones, I had to, we talked about the locker room was one. They're going to do that.
Yeah.
When we talked SD, I was concerned about the ADA bleachers.
Yeah.
And I think that's going to be worked out as an alternate. Not a whole lot. The paving outside is still, you know, a concern. There is a lot of paving.
Okay.
But we do have the additional money that we got from the comps issue, debt issue, that we can use for things that may not be covered, or we need additional things too.
Okay.
And I wish they all would have pushed them. Anything else you want to say about all that?
You covered the issues.
Okay.
We've been pushing based on our conversation and things, and we've said we think we've done, so.
Bear with me because I don't know how to answer, ask this question. How is the relationship between all of the team members? Are we still in a productive relationship with our builders and all of that?
I think everybody's doing their best. I will say on the high school and elementary side work, I mean, the building's all pretty. So I think we'll come together sometime.
Okay.
Julia, Bobby, are there any specific questions or any concerns?
I haven't been here in a long time.
No, I've seen you for a very long time.
And this is not on timeframe. We haven't asked that question for a while. We're still, we're still looking good timeframe on our January for our, everybody's looking good timeframe on our four, five, and our?
Yes, the schedules right now are showing that time, but we're just getting done for the schedule. There are always risks when I bring in the monthly report. I talk about the risks.
Yep.
And this time, I think we have to put a little bit on there.
Sure.
We have had issues with things being delivered and had a couple of instances of sick people, so that's always an issue.
Okay. Okay.
One thing we just heard this week is we're buying the KELM, and the appliance is outside the project. The KELM we just found this week is five months out.
The what? The what?
KELM out.
Like for art class?
Yes.
Oh, the KELM is five months out.
So that building might open up in January. We probably won't have a KELM until March for that building, but it's just COVID, five months. In June, it was four, six weeks. Now it's five months.
Okay.
Are we far enough along as far as paving and stuff like that? If we get a big rain for several weeks, will that set us back, or are we, are we past those?
They're paving now, so I would say we're pretty good.
So that's good. While there's good weather, it ain't done?
Just a rule of thumb, we have to turn down Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
I talked about paving the
Connection. The connection road?
Next week?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, good. Okay.
Completely paving that next week?
First, yeah, first base layer, yeah.
Okay.
It's exciting.
Island seemed to go down overnight. Now we're already paving.
Oh, those islands.
It is exciting.
It is exciting. It's been a very long process, but it's nice to see what we plan starting to come to fruition.
Well, you're at the point where, you know, you can go in on Monday and go back in on Friday and it's like a three days.
The high school is completely enclosed now, right?
The elementary school is completely enclosed. I think the high school either is or it will be very, very, very shortly. Just one dose in.
Yeah, that's, high school's not done yet.
They're working on the roof.
Yeah, the air conditioning running on four hundred.
Oh, yeah, that was awesome. There was furniture inside. That's what I, there was furniture there.
Actually, I put a playground button, and we saw a company.
Wow.
Started a playground.
Nice. No, everybody good?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for that.
All right. Thanks, Bob. All right, we have six E. Oh, no, we have to approve that first, don't we? Sorry. We don't want to skip that. We, yeah, go ahead.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. All right, that passes. We need six E, addendum to the student handbook. We need a motion to approve an addendum to all student handbooks.
I don't see a attachment.
I haven't seen an attachment on it either.
We didn't put it out there.
Okay.
How do we discuss first?
Yeah, that's fine. So we need a motion to approve, and then we can discuss, please, so.
Well, I don't know what I'm making a motion to approve.
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Discuss it.
Yep.
Okay, so to give a little background, so over the weekend, the Health Department contacted me about the fall dance planned by some community members for our kids. So at the time, the Health Department had been contacted by parents as well as some students in the district. And so he wanted to make sure we were aware and to kind of tell us, you know, what his steps would be, and then to kind of talk to us about, you know, if we were going to do anything as a school district. So that was the weekend, and then I would say over the course of the last few days leading up to on that conversation, I've also received communication from various parents in the school district that are concerned about this event as well. Not so much the event itself, but the aftermath of what happens if all the kids are together. So I'm working with the Health Department today. Since the parents are organizing it, there are regulations as well as their opinion that it was not a good idea to have a land. But if so, these are the guidelines you have to follow. I think one thing that we're, we're getting to remember is what the spring was like when we couldn't come to school. You know, I understand kids are disappointed. I'm a parent myself of our school students. So I get it. I'm not without empathy. But I also know that we have kids at school. We have kids participating in activities and sports, and we're starting to see a little bit of normalcy return. When events like dances or when you're bringing hundreds of kids together in one area, number one, Health Department said it would be very complicated, if not impossible, to conduct contract tracing because you wouldn't know which kids were around who together in that period of time. They also said, you know, this could be too many students being quarantined. If we're unable to determine where it started and who was exposed to COVID. On top of that, this could impact students that choose not to attend the event because they want to be at school, but yet the person that could get COVID could be sitting next to them in class. You know, we've seen that happen, and it's starting to happen in other districts. You know, it's one of the unfortunate consequences of this virus. I have not spoken to the families that are organizing the event. It is my understanding that they want to work with the school and are expressing an interest in working with the schools. It's always our take as a district and schools that we want to work with our families and we want to work with our parents. But what, I don't think everyone's understanding is if we, as a district, and/or the Health Department, believed it was safe and responsible to host a dance, we would be hosting one ourselves. We're not taking homecoming away to punish students. We're not upholding it to hurt anybody. We're trying to keep kids safe and keep them in school. And we want to have a dance. We want to have a lot of events for kids in all grade levels, not just our seniors, but all grade levels as soon as we can and as soon as it's safe. Whether that's December, whether that's February, I know everyone's sitting here, and I'm sure one at home is all hoping the senior event. When that happens, we will absolutely have events for our kids. We don't want them to miss out on things. However, if an event like this occurs, the education of many students are put in jeopardy. And I feel like we've done a really good job, and we fought really hard to get our kids in school. We're one of the few districts that have kids coming back five days a week and are doing so in a safe manner, and we're having success. So an effort to keep our district moving forward within-person learning five days a week and to keep kids safe. I have an addendum to the handbook that to prevent events like this from happening. I'll pass it around to you. This language was recommended by Booker and Epler. And I think it's worth the board at least having a conversation to see how we feel. That's always what comes around.
Thank you.
So the addendum would read, any student choosing to participate in or attend an event that violates orders from the Ohio or Lincoln County Health Department, including but not limited to orders regarding mass gatherings, sports, facial coverage, et cetera, may be subject to the following consequences. The student may not be permitted to attend school or extracurricular events in person for fourteen calendar days, ten school days. The students may be required to receive his or her education from home as remote learners during this time period. So this is an option we, as a district and you as a board, have. I know situations like this are difficult situations. We're in a lose-lose. You know, everybody, it's impossible to make everybody happy. And I know people feel like we're trying to penalize kids, and that's the furthest thing that I think any of us want. So I think we should have a conversation as a board to see how we.
We're not taking education away. We'll just be learning from home for that ten days.
Correct. It's the same thing as current students that are quarantined or due for quarantine.
So should we call that a consequence, students may be required to receive his or her education from home? Is that it?
No, I don't, I mean, sorry.
No, you know, that's what I'm asking.
I don't like the word a consequence because a lot of students chose to learn from home. I had a parent call me earlier this week about something completely different, and he said something about sending a kid home as punishment, and I'm like, it's not punish, or discarding a child, or something like that. And I took a big issue with it because the education they're receiving remotely is adequate, more, it's more than adequate. It's the same. It's comparable, I guess is the right word. So I just, I don't like to use the word consequence necessarily. But subject to, I don't know, it's all language.
Rules, just as following rules.
It just may be subject to the following, period.
Yeah.
Not consequence. It just may be subject to the following.
Yeah, that's.
I don't think it needs, I mean.
Sorry, John, I didn't mean to snap.
I think it's just the reality of the situation is if you make the choice of A, then the result will be B.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
So. And, and the choices we're speaking of is not if you go to church with your family or go to Walmart or go to the grocery store. Those aren't the choices that we're talking about. We're talking about a mass gathering of our children together where the rules are not being followed.
Correct.
Yeah.
So I have a follow-up question. And I'm not sure. I'm sure that we have staff that probably have seniors who may have said, I'm going to volunteer for chaperoning or going and watching. Will they be required to stay quarantined for fourteen days if they attend, or staff attends?
We, I did not address that with, with Epler, I'd have to ask. I don't know how that would work because I feel that's a separate entity.
Okay.
So I'm just not sure.
Okay.
We probably have to treat it fairly equal, is my guess. Although an adult could go and chaperone and not get within six feet of students, whereas students could hit a dance floor with three hundred kids. And how are we going to, how is that going to be a matter? So an adult, in essence, could go chaperone and remain this far away at all times, whereas hundreds of kids probably would be different.
So how would we define if something violated?
Trying to figure out how to say that.
The direct orders.
The Health Department would work with us on events if they were, you know, made public knowledge, and we knew of them and/or we saw, you know, pictures of kids, et cetera. It would help us determine if they followed regulations. And then if they did follow the regulations, then obviously that would be acceptable. If they follow, you know, the rules or regulations by the Ohio and Lincoln County Health Department, then we could feel safe knowing our kids could come back to school and not potentially infect other kids who chose not to attend.
Right. And if it were provable that the rules were followed, there wouldn't be any consequence?
Right.
I use that term consequence loosely here. And just likewise, if the rules were not followed, then this is what would occur?
Yes.
So provided that there is no issue that's in violation of a direct order from the state of Ohio or from Lincoln County, then there's no problem at all.
Correct.
The only problem arises if a violation occurs, and that violation is provable somehow.
Yes, correct.
And if we can prove that, then the, again, loosely used consequences is the result of that.
Yes, that's correct.
And, you know, this also pertains, could pertain to other things too, not just a specific event.
Absolutely.
Um, okay, I'm just.
Yep. So if an event can be held and it can follow, follow the guidelines of both health departments, even though, again, I would reiterate, and I believe Chad has also reiterated that he does not believe it's a good idea. However, if it was still going to be held and it followed the guidance and everything was done in accordance, then that would be fine. Yes.
So I have a question. I mean, I'm just throwing this way out because you know me. What if a large event was held outside of Licking County?
And our students attend?
Huh?
And our, for our students to attend?
Yeah. Like, so would Chad still be will, I'm sorry, would the Licking County Health Department still be willing to work with us in determining whether violation occurred or not based on whatever information that we might have?
Yeah, I think that the Licking County Health Department is willing to work under the guidelines of the Ohio Health Department as well.
Yeah, okay.
So I think they're willing to work with our district, because obviously the guidelines in county to help us to make sure our kids are safe.
Right.
So I, I don't think that would be a problem.
And then I have one additional question that's just unrelated because I think I had asked this a while ago. The fourteen calendar days, ten school days. So did we? Never mind. I answered my own question by thinking, talking about it out loud. Good, never mind.
So in essence, at the end of the day, we just want everyone to be safe. We want to keep kids in school. We want to keep doing the things we're doing in a safe manner. And we want to protect both those that choose to attend and those that choose to not attend because they want to make sure they're safe.
Well, in my mind, that's kind of how I see this. This is a protection because if you do something that does violate the direct orders from Ohio or Licking County Health Department, we have done our due diligence to protect our staff members, our students, and people in the community.
Correct.
So if someone chooses to violate that, then we have to react and protect our entities.
I think it's clear that the, the five of us on the school board do not have a right to say what parents can or can't do.
Absolutely not.
Where our diligence lies is if we, when we find out about it, how are we going to protect our staff and students?
Right.
Question. Would they have food and drinks?
But this depends on the event.
Yeah.
With this event here, the one we're talking about right now.
We're talking about any large event.
I'm not sure.
Well, I'm just thinking, if they have food or drinks, obviously you're going to take your mask off and take a drink and eat food. To me, that's a violation.
Well, I think.
With a crowded group. I'm just, I'm just.
I think the order said it had to be catered and.
The tables have to be.
They have to be ten, they have to be seated at a table. And I think by catering, the definition is served, like not just throwing out food on a table that you bought. But at least that's the rules for weddings. It has to be served by someone with a safe serve license, maybe?
Yes. It's basically a banquet for weddings, not for, uh, that's, that's what the rules were put in place for was a wedding.
Yeah.
Well, and the Licking County Health Department has said, Ohio Health Department is working on guidance for schools, for such things. But he said that could be in a week, that could be in two months. He said there's no timeline or indicator of when that's coming. So, you know, unfortunately, the urgency of having this event in a couple of weeks has brought about this conversation. Now, if we have more time to see what the health department said.
Kath, you mentioned distancing while they're eating and stuff. I don't see any of that in here or any of the rules or regulations. I have no idea what the rules and regulations are going to be.
That's just what was in the health department's language online. Like where it says in accordance with Licking County or Ohio Health Departments.
Okay, so the county has put out guidelines. So at a big event like that, they'll know that they're going to be eating food and drinking. And that, and that's in the guidelines to say, okay, you're going to do this and that.
Yeah.
Okay.
But based on the numbers of positive cases at Miami University and Ohio State University, we, we have seen what happens when large groups of teenagers get together, unfortunately, though, right?
That's what scares me.
That's obviously, that's obviously what happens when large groups of teenagers get together. That's. Not so.
Well, I think also.
Some places.
I've just, I go back to thinking about how the dances are in a normal environment
Absolutely.
and knowing that it's going to be difficult for anyone.
Correct. When our staff is there and able to sort of try to get it under control. Out of control.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, John.
No, you're fine. I, I think too, what I'm hearing is it's not that we don't want this to happen because if we keep following what we're following, there is a great chance that there will be a problem and that there may be a winter formal or something. But we have to stay the course and make sure that that.
Absolutely.
That we are following guidelines. So I don't necessarily see this as a consequence or punishment. But this is setting our policy so that if a violation does occur, we have something that we can go to.
I agree. I just think it's a little early. I think given a few months from now, I think things may look different. And we may be able to do different things for our kids. And we've only been in school a couple of weeks at this point.
I have just one thing I would like to see if everybody else agrees with for the, as far as the language in here. Would it be good to add language that states, um, uh, something about viol-, um, uh, just basically that states that the violation will be determined in conduct, in conjunction with the Licking County Health Department so that, um, because I don't know that we can make, the dis-, the school can make the call without their help. Am I wrong?
I mean, no, I think we would definitely work with them, but I'm not sure. I don't necessarily hope we would need to have that in the handbook, just my opinion. I think it's kind of, we're working with them on all of the stuff right now.
Okay.
So I guess that would just be mine. I think I'm on.
Okay.
Does this relate to the level of basketball?
There's no questions at this point. Do we have a motion? We still have a motion on the table for this, correct? And you've made the changes to?
What was suggested?
Mm-hmm. Okay. And will you check with Dane to make sure that those, the wording on that is still acceptable?
Again, I'd just like to add that this is only impacting anything that's a direct violation. If there's not a direct violation, there's no problem at all.
Right. Correct.
I think that needs to be emphasized here.
Yes, I agree. I agree. Okay. All right. Any other questions? Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Ziney?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Uh, six F.
Motion to approve six F.
There's nothing for this discussion.
Oh, motion to talk about six F.
Basically, you know, Capitol Conference is all virtual, as you know. And from what I'm still reading online, it's still a hundred seventy-five dollars a person.
To wait, to do, now, how, the agenda said free.
That's what I read too.
That was for the fall dinner.
The fall dinner is free.
The OSBA.
So there's no dinner.
Oh. Okay. Right, the con-, the dinner thing.
That's a lot of money for online.
Being on a computer, not being able to network.
Or get goodies.
So before I sign hereby up, I know Dr. Perkins already said we're not going to do administrative staff. You know, once you hit that max of one thousand two twenty-five, I do have to add anybody who wants. But I guess I'm asking the board, do you want to sign up for the Capitol Conference as virtual or not? Some could, some can. It's strictly how you as a board want to handle it.
What's the date on that?
I don't have it saved.
It's the, like, the week of.
The twenty-third of September, right?
It's the week, no, it's the week before Thanksgiving in November.
Almost in November.
Yeah, like Sunday, Monday, Tuesday of the week before Thanksgiving.
Do we still have to go to vote?
Um, we might have to.
So maybe we send one? I just can't see spending this kind of money for.
Well, you, you would just have to, yeah, you would just, it's probably a vote over Zoom, right? Do you want to do it? Do you want to do it?
Uh, it depends what time of the day it is.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
So I would say maybe we could maybe send one person.
That's why I'm, yeah.
To be determined.
Yeah, do you have to tell who it is or can you just sign up one?
Usually when you send in, yeah, they send a name, but it may be different. I can ask.
Yeah.
I'll follow up and ask if we just sign up one person.
I just can't see paying.
I'm probably not going to take off three days of work just sitting from the computer and be honest, to be real honest with you.
Three months already, huh?
Yeah.
Right. And plus to be the same price and not have the convention set. I, I don't know.
Right, yeah.
It, it is Wednesday, September twenty-third.
That's the.
No, 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 that's, that's, that's a fall conference.
Yeah. That's the, what usually is a dinner.
Yeah.
That's a fall dinner one.
This is the convention.
You're right. Carry on. That's a different virtual conference.
Yeah, yeah. And that one's free.
Yeah, she unregistered for that.
Yeah, that was.
Because they both came, the emails came at the same time. And I was like, wait, this one says free and this one says a hundred and seventy-five. I'm like, freak.
Right.
So my suggestion would be one person.
And it, it's probably the afternoon of Monday is the legislative thing, right?
If it's like three or later, I can do it.
Yeah, it probably is a one, but I can do, I can do it.
All right, I'll, I'll reach out to him, talk to him, see when we decide one.
And we'll see if it's going to be one of us.
And when will the actual legislative voting?
Yeah.
And I would be shocked if other school districts around the state are all gung ho going to this too.
No, no, it's just a lot of money.
Right.
Right.
I don't want to have it, but they still want to collect all the money. Okay, that's all I have. I just want your thoughts on that before I move forward.
Yeah. All right. Treasures items, seven A through C.
Motion approval, seven A through C.
Second.
Usual stuff, donations, we always appreciate those. Additional stated purposes, the year goes on, we'll get those in. And then again, a then now, a two then now, it's just timing. I've been in voice first to approach for it. So I asked the board to approve all those.
Any questions on those for Mr. Jones? All right. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Ziney?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. All right, that just, that passes. All right, superintendent items, back to school update.
Okay, just a couple of quick news. We have a run some ideas of what's been happening. So we are, I mean, we're back to school a few weeks. The students are doing an excellent job with the masks. We're seeing very few issues. Their behavior is also great. Office referrals are fairly, I mean, almost non-existent. I think it's very evident if you're in the building, the kids are really happy to be back at school. So I think they're just happy to be there. The transitions in our sixty-twelve are going really well as well. The staggered tunnels and the one-way hallways, those seem to be working out. Busing is also going great. The mask problems, the behavior problems on buses are very few and far between. The entire district team has been in and out of buildings daily, weekly. And we're seeing a lot of enthusiasm in our teaching staff, our kids. I mean, kids are engaged. Even given the current circumstances of how they have to teach and, you know, setup in the classrooms, there are still a lot of really awesome things going on in our school. So overall, things are going really well. So I wanted to share that. And then I wanted to give you an update as well on our enrollment. We're currently at four thousand five hundred and eleven students in the district.
Wow.
We are up a total of a hundred and three at this point from July. We have seventy-one percent of our kids attending in person, so seventy-nine are doing remote. We have seen a significant increase this school year in our homeschool population. We have a hundred and eighteen currently doing homeschool. We have thirty-five that are pending, so they haven't completed their paperwork for homeschool, but they did do homeschool previously. So if we're looking at, you know, a total, we have a hundred and fifty-three kids, which is up about forty-seven from the previous year. So we gained quite a few homeschool families, assuming due to the situation currently. We're, we're also enrolling a lot of students that are moving or changing situations from current schools that are remote. So I think they're taking advantage of the fact that our kids are in person and they want their kids in school. So that's kind of where we're at enrollment wise.
Few questions, right? Um, with the plus hundred and three, is there any particular area or grade or is it just across?
All over, across the board.
And then with school opening, I did have some technology questions. Were the kids able to gain access to computers? Do we have enough cleaning stuff where?
We have enough cleaning stuff. We're not, so we're not currently a one-to-one district. So we were two-to-one before all this happened. And now we have ordered a ton of devices. I mean, we ordered them a while ago, but so does everybody else. So we are waiting.
Okay.
Um, I believe we're going to have a first shipment rolling sometime in October and then a second shipment in December. So we've obviously passed out a lot of devices to our remote learners. So we're getting ready to kind of do some shifting and redistributing. But there are devices available in each building. And there are plenty of cleaning supplies and, you know, Jeff is on order to order more if we run out. So, but a child doesn't have a Chromebook each day, all day to carry with them. But we didn't have that before.
So Monday, when it's a virtual day, the kids who are presently in the buildings, they will not be required to do computer work then?
No, it's, it's, they're, they're supposed to be learning from, they're moving from home. The teachers are supposed to be creating work for them to take with them.
Okay.
And some of them may have already sent home. I don't know, might be going home on Friday, tomorrow, maybe already gone. So no, there's not an expectation that you're using a device on Monday to work with.
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
Everybody would have that.
And the dedic-, just to follow up, the dedicated online learners would continue on their normal.
Yes. Nothing changes for them.
Yes, okay. I thought so.
Oh, and you know, I might as well ask, since I got back to school, with the recent change in lunches and how everyone now gets lunch free, that is, we're definitely seeing growth in both our breakfast and our lunch program. And we also are seeing growth in our remote learners as well. So we served a hundred kids this Wednesday and we should have twenty-five, thirty more coming next week as well. So it's nice to see people taking advantage of that opportunity.
And we should have that through December or until funds run out.
Correct. Yes. So that's it for me. Any other questions?
No. Anybody? Questions? All right. I have some requests to speak on non-agenda items. I have, um, Vicki Heisel. You would introduce yourself and address, please, and you have five minutes. Mr. Jones will be keeping the time and he will let you know when you have one minute left. Okay?
I'm Vicki Heisel.
Oh, Heisel, excuse me.
I've been, I've lived in Atlanta for twenty-two years. I dress over in, I'll, I'll talk to him more there. I am, I'm interested in the future development in this district. I'm talking about the tax, the tax abaments that are going on, all the building that's going on around, all the warehouses that are going on. These, these aren't going to the schools. They're, I mean, they're, they're getting all these tax abaments and it's not going to the schools. You're getting very little money from the employees that are there. All these warehouses in the future are going to become AIs. Amazon's already started bringing them in. They're going to cut the school's budgets already. So you're going to have to make that up somehow. Us property owners have been coming, paying all this for all these years. They come back at us all the time for more property taxes. You know, I don't understand why companies like Amazon are getting, they're a one-trillion-dollar company. Why are they getting pretty? Why are they getting fifteen-year abatements in Berkeley? They just got their fourth one over in New Albany, and it's fourth in this area. There's four Amazons now in this area, plus the one they just have over on, I mean, through, which they didn't have to pay for that building yet. You know, I'm just, you know, I'm a property owner, I just don't feel that it's property owners' only responsibility to pay all of this to borrow or afford to land on all of us. But I think businesses need to start pitching in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For coming and telling us.
Let's see, Justin Yarnell, please.
Hi, my name is Justin Yarnell. I live in ninety-seven eighty-two Linds Road. I'm Vicki's neighbor. Um, I'm here because community involvement, involvement is essential to promoting and maintaining quality education for all students, and I'm a member of this community. Um, I'm going to talk about the same development that Vicki just referred to. There's ninety-five acres on the corner of Tollgate in Route Forty, uh, that just had a rezoning request, uh, denied by the commission and then approved by the board trustees. Um, I think it was a bad decision. Um, and, uh, I'm hoping that, uh, that you, that you guys, uh, uh, because you're authorized to negotiate the tax incentives, uh, through the Ohio Enterprise Zone Program, uh, can help dissuade this particular developer from moving in. Um, you know, uh, it's essentially, uh, the Ohio Zone, uh, Enterprise Zone Program, uh, subsidizes property taxes for big businesses on the backs of men and women in our local community. And if it's not subsidizing those taxes, then it's, then it's making our kids suffer for it. We already have one failing school, uh, school in this school district, Petascola Elementary. And I, and I, and I, and I'll ask, how bad are our other schools, even though they're not deemed failing? Where do they rank compared to Upper Arlington and New Albany schools? How many of our kids go to college? How many of our kids graduate? How high are their test scores? This is all a product of school funding. And when you, and when you, when you grant a property tax abatement to an Amazon or Prologos or, uh, an Aseena or, or any of the other distribution centers that are in Atona, okay, you're depriving our kids of a better education. How many teachers have left our school district because they're not paid enough? How many aligned items from the budget have you cut because we don't have adequate funding? You know, in nineteen fifty-four, in Brown versus Board of Education, our Supreme Court said that public education is a public good, and it should be offered to all on equal terms. In that case, they were referring to, uh, racial segregation. And although racial segregation is not legal today, uh, segregation by socioeconomic status is very much permitted, and it's wrong. I personally grew up in a school in which I ate out of the free lunch line. And I know what it's like to need school programs when my parents can't, couldn't step up. I know what it's like to have friends that go to a different school, that have SAT prep programs, but my school doesn't have one because the budget doesn't allow it. And so I'm asking tonight, uh, that when the developer of the, of the, of the property on the corner of Tollgate and Route Forty comes to negotiate their tax incentive with you, that you remember that it's the kids of our community who are going to pay for it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, Mark Evans.
Good evening. My name's Mark Evans. I live at ninety-one Old North Church Road. Uh, I'm also the president of our Neighborhood Civic Goods Association in New England Acres. Uh, I'd like to talk to you about abatements and whether they're still needed. Uh, my opinion is abatements should be used sparingly in a development move to entice businesses to build. Once it's proven, what's the need for abatements, except handing out money to businesses? Um, the warehouse corridor is well established. Amazon is expanding to other areas. There should be no more need for abatements. People want to locate there. The infrastructure's there. The highway system loves truck stop. Everything's there. People want to go in there. Why pass any more abatements? Um, the abatements are only going to cause massive development at an increased speed, which we're paying the price for. Traffic speeding through neighborhoods. Try to go on Forty. All, all that truck traffic is blocking the road into Amazon. That, the townships are not handling it. And those things should be handled before more development, and abatements are just going to fuel that development. Uh, the warehouses are also fueling another development, high-density housing. We're currently fighting, uh, rezoning next to us for high-density housing. They're trying to put three and a half to four times many homes on a single acre as ours in violation of the comprehensive plan, and Licking County, uh, Commissioner even said that. Uh, they're dead set on pushing that through. There's another, uh, development, uh, JBW that was formerly, uh, classified as a PMUD with fifty-five and over, assisted living, and now they want to change it to seven homes on an acre. What is that going to do to the schools? It's going to flood them with students. Our development, they're trying to put three hundred and sixty-five homes next to us, telling us it's for empty nesters, and it, it's not. They can't control it. It's for the warehouse workers, which, that's fine, everybody's got to live somewhere, but those aren't empty nesters. Those are families. Those are, you know, um, so I would really hope that you guys would reconsider approving any abatements from this point forward, unless it's absolutely necessary, but I don't think it is. And I'm not talking about just the Tollgate development all, because, yes, if an area's improving, try to get them in, but why do you need to entice them with that? It only helps that business and that landlord. So, and I said, I, I heard that the total enrollment was four thousand five hundred and eleven students. Well, we got three hundred and sixty-five homes that may go in. Just think about how many students that one development would add, and that would set a precedent. Every other farm might go. And I'd like to know, is the township working with you? Have they reached out to you about these developments? Of, we're thinking of pushing this high density against our rezoning, against the comprehensive plan, which you guys probably went on to build your new buildings. So if they're going to change that and increase the student load on you guys, have they been talking to you? Uh, it should be a partnership, and I know on my end, they're not with us. They have a vision for these warehouses.
One moment, one night, please.
Okay. But they have a vision for these warehouses, and they're pushing as much as they can at the detriment of our community and our school system. So please reconsider any future abatements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, Cory Ford. Teamsters Local Four Thirteen. Southwest Licking Education Association. All right, we need a, a motion for adjournment, please.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zidney?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. We are adjourned at eight P M.